Take me just a second to get all my stuff going. I paused the slideshow and now it won't restart. There we go. Okay, first, I would like to thank you all for your active participation in the government process. Board and commissions serve a critical role in the development and implementation of city public policy, advising the council. Their roles are critical to modeling our community by acting as the voice of our citizens. It's very important what you guys do for us. Take substantial commitment to be good board commission members, and the decisions you make have a direct impact on the quality and level of services the city offers. While serving as a board and commission member, you are bound by ethical standards and state and city laws, as well as city policies. Today, we're going to go over some of the topics and materials that will help you while you're serving on the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. So, let's talk about your primary responsibilities. The Parks and Recreation Advisory Board meets on the first Thursdays of February, May, August, and November. And although we all have lives, it's very important that you guys are here and participating on and with our meetings. The Salatna City Code identifies the role of all boards and commissions, and then 2.5030 is specific to the Parks and Recs Boards' responsibilities. That's on page two and three of your packet. So, some of the important things to know is it takes three of you to make a quorum. This is why it's important to let us know if you're not coming, because if there's only two of you here, we can't have a meeting. So, and we've advertised, and that's really hard when we come in and call roll and say we're adjourned because we cannot do any business. Every year annually, the board is required to select a chair. I love this board usually selects the person not here. And the special meetings can be scheduled by the chair or the city manager as needed. So, if something comes up in between those quarterly meetings, we can, well, it'll be me or Breck that calls you and finds out your availability so we can schedule a special meeting. So, and page, like I said, page three is specific to your guys' role as parks and recreation. You offer consultation and recommendations regarding the management, operation, and maintenance of all city-controlled parks and recreation facilities. You hear and offer recommendations for adjusting grievances from facility users, make recommendations on management and operational topics, including fees for use of facilities and properties, and review and recommend to council development of parks, recreation facilities, and city beautification. Periodically review parks plans and recommend location of benches. The board has direct oversight over the Adopt a Corner program. And, so again, if you're not going to be here, let us know as soon as possible. Let Andrew know so we can keep track of it. And, when you receive, this is very important, which we'll get into towards the end of the meeting, is the Open Meetings Act. But when you get an email from us, we try to blind copy you. It is very important that you do not ever use the Reply All button, because that is a serial meeting. You've had communication about your role as a parks director outside of the public eye. So, never use Reply All. We tend to use blind copy, so you can't, but every now and then, somebody forgets. So, that's a huge thing. We get your agendas no later than the Friday before the meeting. The email includes a version of the agenda and a link to your packet. The Parks packet is printed and will be available. If you'd like it in advance, let us know, and we will make sure that your copy's up here before the meeting, and you can pick it up from the front desk. Most of you look at the online version and just get the paper when you get here. It is important that you prepare for your meeting. If you want an item on the agenda, you need to let Andrew know at least two weeks before your meeting. You should arrive for each meeting on time with your meeting materials. We have notepads and pens for you at the dais. It is your responsibility to review these items prior to the meeting in advance. If there's something that you know you're going to definitely want a lot more clarification on, it's not a bad idea for you to contact Andrew or Joel in advance and let them know so they're fully prepared for anything that could come up during the meeting. You sure can.
If we, well, this isn't being recorded, is it? So, I don't need to use.
We're streaming, yes.
Oh, okay, we are. So, if we want, or can we, I guess is a better question. Can we put something up for consideration or ask to add an item that can be discussed by the group to see if they want to add it? Or is this just, is this just an advisory committee where things are on here for us and we can say yes or no?
So, if there's something that the board wants to bring up, at the end, you can't bring it up and add it at the meeting, because we haven't noticed it, and the public has a right to know what you're discussing. But you can talk to Andrew about adding it to a future agenda. And, yeah, no, it doesn't have to have full board support to make an agenda. That can be made if the full board doesn't support it, when there's a request for a motion. If it's not seconded, it doesn't get discussed.
So, yeah. So, thank you for that, because I know that you can't just bring something up once the agenda is set at set. But if it's something that wants to be considered, it's nice to know that it can be. And I didn't know if the purview was to bring it up here and have it be voted at the end of a meeting and have it be voted down. Like, no, we really don't care about, you know, popsicles every Thursday for kids, you know. But, so, we might vote it down, but maybe we really care about having tree forts in the parks, which I'm not suggesting either. But, so, we can just ask Andrew when it can be put on there, and then that's when it would be discussed, at probably the end of the meeting, after we've done all our business.
As long as the suggestion is something in the designated responsibilities of this board. So, if you wanted to bring something forward that was not in the guidelines of what this board does, that's not going to make an agenda. But as long as it's something that falls under your required actions, yes, that could be brought to an agenda by asking the parks director to add it to the next agenda.
And if he didn't add it to the next agenda, we could bring it up here, but then say, could we?
Put it on the next agenda. And again, if it doesn't, weren't waiting a full quarter till you get to it again, you can ask that a special meeting be scheduled. Yes, when we get to the Open Meetings Act, I will completely explain all of that, so. So, okay, so, next, we're going to go into understanding our agenda, and why do we have an agenda? First off, this is page four of your packet. "The purpose of any board or commission is to conduct the business." The agenda identifies what business will be taken up during a specific meeting. Here, we just touched on this. You're not going to take up any items that were not noticed on your agenda. The open meeting law applies, and the purpose of the Open Meetings Act is to protect the public's right to know. Discussing an item that was not noticed on the agenda violates the public's right to know. They were not told that you were going to be talking about it, so they weren't there to hear you talk about it. Having an agenda increases productivity by ensuring items that need to be done are done and addressed during that meeting. So, let's take a look at your agenda template. Stay here. So, of course, we call the meeting to order, and then the roll is called, and then there's approval of an agenda. So, there's, you guys have, I've seen you amend your agenda and allow a presentation before. There has been things added to your agenda. But a presentation is not something that you'll be making a decision on at that meeting. You're just gathering information. And, so that's where you would add a scheduled comment and presentation, and that would be something that Andrew would have a heads-up on if somebody wanted to present something to you, like an idea, that would be there. Again, it's a presentation. If there's no action item related to it, you wouldn't take action at that meeting. Action items are when we need you guys to make recommendations. So, and we try to phrase those so that it's clear what we're asking you to do. Recommend approval. And then we have the reports, the parks report, then the board chairs report, and then when the city manager is in attendance, the managers report. And then here, number seven, we let open up the public comment, and that can be about anything that's not on the agenda. So, if you have an action item, you're going to let the public comment specific to that item. This part here is about anything they'd like to talk to you about, followed by your council comments. When your ex officio is here, he's going to give you an update about what's happening at the council level, and he takes back what happened here and reports it to the council at the next council meeting. And then, of course, your closing comments, which, that is the perfect point. If there's something that you think needs to come up in the future, that's a good time right there. Say, you know, can we talk about this at the next meeting? And Andrew will keep notes and get that on the agenda. And then finally, there's the adjournment. So, is there any questions about your guys' agenda?
No, there's not. So, a good question. So, then, and this is not a question that I want to happen tonight, but we probably didn't need to ask. We should try to, if you're, um, if I might, or put anything on the agenda. And I was about to, I was trying to, I was trying to, I was talking about something more.
And that's also something that Penny, that if you weren't clear on, you're free to contact them as an individual member outside and ask them if it'll be on the agenda and express your wish that it were, so. Okay. It should, well, it should go directly to you, because there is the potential of a serial meeting. If that board member talked to another member about it and then talked to Penny, then that's a serial meeting. So, yeah, they should take their request directly to you. That's when you have a small body.
It is, because you have to be really careful. We do differently, especially with the school board. They do have a small meeting, but they also, if they want something actually on the agenda, it means you should go to the chair and the director.
Board meetings are actually less, like, the councils, less restricted than the advisory boards, correct, Shelley?
You know, I don't, I haven't followed the rules applicable to the school board.
Oh, I was just thinking about the council is less restricted than us.
Well, they have a higher body, so there's a higher number. However, the same rules apply to them. They do. Okay, so, page number five on your packet is everything people want to know about a meeting. That your meeting is well organized. Your time's not going to be wasted. You have received all of the relevant information. There's an agenda scheduling goals, and your ideas and participation are valued and valuable. And you will not personally be attacked or criticized for your ideas, and the meeting will end on time. We don't have a specific adjournment time, but you know you're going to get through the business on the agenda. So, some of the basic things that we need to talk about is etiquette. When you come in here, please turn off your cellphone or your ringer, and you shouldn't be messing with it while we're conducting business. It could look like if two of you are, it could look like you're having a conversation outside of the public's eye, or that you're just not paying attention. And especially if a public member's addressing you, that's just, doesn't appear very, like, you're listening to what they have to say. So, and then someday, when we all get to sit together again, it's important that you're not having side conversations with your neighbor. You know, it's like, let's not do that. It's, do not interrupt other people while they're speaking. This includes the public, and you guys are great. But there are some contentious boards that don't get along, and it's still, you should not interrupt them if you don't agree with their saying. Let them have their turn, wait for the chair to acknowledge you and give you the floor, and don't attack them in your comments. Just voice your opinion. It's not an opportunity to say somebody's wrong. It's an opportunity to see how you feel about something. You need to be a team. That team, being a part of that team doesn't mean you all agree on this issue, but you do have to treat each other with respect. The role of the chair, page six. You're on six.
So, determining the presence of the forum, then I need to see which person, who, who will call.
No, so, how we're doing it is, yeah, yes, you can hand that off to Andrew. He roll calls and lets you know very well. So, here is, we are with the role of the chair. The chair is the one that's in charge of the meeting. She ensures that the meeting stays within the agenda items, keeps us on schedule, doesn't allow personal attacks. So, if you do intend to attack somebody, Penny is going to, Chair Badla is going to stop you. And she means to focus on the topic, one topic at a time, and conducts the meeting in a fair and equitable manner, meaning giving everybody the equal opportunity to speak to the item. Your role, is there any questions about the chair's role? So, when you are speaking, you should wait until the chair acknowledges you and gives you the floor to speak. Like I said, this is a very small board. It's very relaxed. A lot of it's conversation, so sometimes that slides. But generally, that's the proper etiquette, is waiting for the chair to acknowledge you. So, board members, page number seven. It's important, and you guys are great. Show up on time and be prepared. Everyone participates in the meeting. This means letting others participate as well as you. Keep your questions clear. If you have a complex question, break it into pieces. Because a lot of times, especially if it's the public that's sitting there and they've presented to you, and you have questions for them, that's an intimidating spot. And if you hit them with a multi-six-section question, they're probably not going to get all of it. So, hit, break it up in small pieces so that their answer is clear, and then they know exactly what you're asking of them. So, anyways, this is just a cute little thing to read on your own time that just reminds everybody what you have to do. Let's go into parliamentary. Why do we have parliamentary? Parliamentary is part of one process that helps protect the rights of the people to join together and accomplish a common goal. It allows for debate to take place in a fair manner with the least amount of controversy. Members should not speak until given the floor by the chair and should never interrupt a board or commission member or member of the public while they are speaking. I know it's a little repetitive, but these are important points. It establishes the rules and ethics required to effectively conduct a meeting. It establishes the rules of the majority. Some issues only require a simple majority. Other tougher issues require a higher number, for example, a two-third majority vote. It maintains respect for the minority by ensuring that the minority has equal opportunity to present their perspectives. So, it allows everybody to say how they feel, and then we have the vote. So, is there any questions on why we have it? So, now, we'll get into a little more detail. Again, the quorum, for you guys, it's three. We need three of you present to present. When you are, obtain the floor before speaking, address the chair. So, if, say, Mr. Higarte had a question, or made a statement, and Ms. Dutil, I would never say it right, had a question for you, she would actually address that through the chair in a normal board. She wouldn't ask you directly. She's through the chair, Mr. Higarte. Again, like I said, we're relaxed. If you guys go to higher boards, these things will come in more handy. When you are ready to make a motion, wait till you have the floor, and all your motions begin with "I move." Motion should be specific, unique, and concise, and always in the affirmative. So, "I move," "we," "don't do that," is not a good motion. "I move." So, if it's something that you know that the board doesn't support, but there's still the need for a motion, although if you don't support it, there doesn't have to be a motion, and it just goes away. But if you want to bring it to debate, you can move to approve it for the sake of debate. And then the debate can go on, and you can, just because you made the motion, doesn't mean you have to vote for it. You can still vote against it. So, that you see frequently, is people don't necessarily support it, but they do support the debate happening. And, if you are going to make a motion in a meeting that you are just, kind of, here I have an idea, please write it down. What you find is it's stated differently multiple times. Write it down so that when you're asked to repeat it, or the chair is asked to repeat it, you can have them a written version of the motion so that it's the same motion every time it's stated. A motion has to be seconded. If it does not have a second, you cannot open debate. So, without that second, it means there's not enough support for debate, so the motion falls to the floor. It is, inappropriately often said, "dies for lack of a second." The proper statement is, "the motion has fallen to the floor."
I know, on our board, a lot of times, we do second the motion just so we can discuss it, so that it's, sometimes it's a polite thing, and sometimes it's just, maybe you need to give more information, and you know you're going to maybe have it fail anyways, but at least you give that person the respect that they're thinking about doing something different. So, we, I mean, they've informed my motions a couple of times, and I thought, oh, they're great ones, but we can't let go. And so, I think, you know, and I know it's happening to some people, and they've gotten in the mess. So, it does bring on some of that angst, but I think we can do however we want. But oftentimes, we let them go, so at least hear the person's thoughts, and then you can say, well, right now, this can't be quite all real. So, that's a, that's really important to know, that if it's not seconded, maybe you're going to get there, and you're going to know that.
Yep. So, debating the motion. Only can the debate start after a second has been made and acknowledged by the chair. And generally, the maker of the motion is the first speaker on the motion. So, a lot of times, it's something brought forward by the director, and they're asking you to make the motion. So, not necessarily is the first person, in our scenario, going to be the first speaker. You guys are going to make the motion second and hand it off to the director or the assistant director to speak to the motion that's on the floor. Amending the motions. There's no need to say it's a friendly amendment. All amendments are just amendments, so it's a motion to amend. An amendment also requires a second and can be debated and has to be resolved before you return to the main motion. So, for instance, we had the trees, the dog park tonight. If the motion was to recommend the plan for addressing the mitigation measures, and if somebody wanted to say, well, I want to amend the motion that we plant ten cherry trees in there, just for an example, because I'm not a park trees person. But that motion would have to be resolved before you can go back to approving the final. So, you'd have to vote on whether you want to add ten cherry trees, and then you go back to the plan as amended. So, the mitigation plan as amended to include the ten cherry trees. So, it's a stair-step process, and once that amendment's out there, you have to resolve that. Misunderstood motions. So, I've seen this so many times. It's sad. Question. Somebody will yell "question." That means they're over the debate and they want to go back to vote. They don't want to hear any more debate on the matter. So, let's think about this. This is a body. The motion is on the floor. It belongs to all five of you. One of you can't stop what's happening just by yelling "question." The proper move is "I move the previous question," means we're going back to the vote. This requires a second, so that one person cannot take control of your meeting just by saying "question." It requires a second, and it is out of order when somebody has the floor. You have to wait till you're acknowledged and you have the floor. So, if somebody's speaking and debating, you can't just yell "question" in the background. And, oops, I jumped too far. Tabled. Tableing something is just to, the motion to table is to set something aside temporarily so you can take up something more important. It's not meant to get rid of something. If you want to get rid of something permanently, there's another motion. So, say you have a couple of things on your agenda, but there's a person here that's for the last item, and you want to hear them. You can move to table the current item in front of you and take up the item so that person can get on their airplane or whatever they're going to do. Once that's over, the motion to remove it from the table brings that item that you just temporarily set aside back. If it's brought back, there's rules to it. So, if it's brought back at the same meeting, yeah, it is. So, if you bring it back at the same meeting, and then, sorry, this one, I haven't reviewed this material for two years, and I crash-coursed it today. The, if it's brought back at the same meeting, it brings it right back. And I do believe, if I'm remembering correctly, that I can verify and let you all know after this, is it can be brought back at the next meeting only. Failure to bring it back at the following meeting, it will fall to the floor and be gone. So, if your intent is to get more information from staff or whatever on the item, the proper motion is to postpone. And you would postpone to the next meeting. You can't postpone to two meetings out. You'd postpone it to the next meeting. There are some organizations that have special rules that allows them to postpone a couple of meetings out. The Parks Board does not. So, you would, if you needed it out two meetings, you'd have to postpone to the next one, and at the next meeting, postpone it again. And if you really want to get rid of it, and it got the second and made it the floor, but everybody's going to look, feel like they don't look like they should if they vote in a certain way, and you just want it to go away without having to vote, the motion is to postpone indefinitely, which means it just goes away and nobody had to vote it up or down. So, now, we get to the Open Meetings Act. This is the one that I ask you all to, if you have any doubts, any questions, always call me. I will be glad to walk you through any of the process. If something occurs accidentally and you all three get together, talk to me. There is a way we can cure it. I prefer not to ever cure it, if you guys. We're a small town, and I know we all go to the Music in the Park. You're going to say hi to each other. Don't congregate and talk about Parks business there. It's like, hi, great day, beautiful day, grandkids are fine, kids are doing good, that kind of stuff. Do not talk about Parks thing. It's, we have a very gathered community. We're all friends inside and outside of work and our boards. So, you are going to run into each other. Keep it on the up and up, and don't talk about any city business in those events. So, what is the Open Meetings Act? It's a state law that addresses the meetings of the public entities, protects the public's right to know and their opportunity to be heard, defines a public meeting and a public entity. A meeting occurs when more than three members or a majority engage collectively in discussing discussions of a subject that the body is authorized to act on or set policy or recommendations on. It does not matter where the meeting occurs. If it was pre-arranged, unplanned, casual, social contact falls under this category. So, like I just said, don't talk city business, and you're okay. It establishes that proper public notice goes out for all meetings. We notify the public when we're meeting, how we're meeting. Our meeting is open for them, and let them know what we're going to be talking about so they can determine if they need to be part of that conversation. We publish in newspapers. We put it out on Facebook, and we post it in the city and library bulletin boards. And it's important that we do it consistently, the same way every time. So, that's part of it, and that's something that our offices do. All of our meetings are open to the public. There are very few subjects that can be held in executive session. And, again, that would be more as an advisory body. There wouldn't be subjects to fall under executive session for you guys. That's more a council feature. It lays out provisions for attending and voting, establishes provisions for distributing of meeting materials, and the Open Meetings Act is enforced by the city administration and governing body. So, in other words, if we had a potential violation, it would be up to the administration and the council to take an action to resolve it, and we would get feedback from the attorney, so. Any questions about that? And, conflict of interest. So, the city has its own conflict of interest code. It applies to all of you, and it's written as, the, it's in here, I'm sorry. On page eighteen of your packet is the specifics right out of our code. And what is a substantial financial interest according to our code? Is contractual with the city or any city agency or agent in an amount over $500. Contractual relationship with any person whose personal property or property rights pertaining to such relationship are subject to inquiry or action by the city or agent in an amount exceeding $500. And, the big thing to know here is if you think that you have financial interest or something that you'll be recommending action on the council is could financially impact any part of your life, say, your property value, I need to know so we can contact the attorney, verify that there is or is not a conflict. So, if you see something on the agenda that's going to affect, specifically, something in your life, or like, for instance, you are, right now, you open a tree-cutting business, and you bid to clear some of our trees, we need to know about that. So, let's see. So, let's see. There are some exceptions. Normal and necessary and customary purchases by the city or agent on a month-to-month basis so long as the purchase amounts do not exceed $500 and the purchases do not commit the city to purchase on any basis. Did you have a question? I'm sorry, I don't have my glasses on. No, I thought you had your hand. Disclosure requirements. As soon as you are aware that you may have a conflict, call me. When we get into the meeting situation where the subject is before us, you will declare a possible conflict. The chair rules whether the conflict exists or not. And that's why we need the heads-up so that we can make sure that the chair, right now, Chair Vada, is well-aware of the potential and we have the attorney's recommendation regarding that. Mind you, the chair's ruling can be overturned by a majority vote. So if she rules, there's no conflict and the rest of you disagree, you can overrule the chair's opinion and rule that there is a conflict. And, oh, that would be the end of my slideshow. So at this point, I'm open for questions about anything we covered. Remember, my phone is always there. If you have a question outside, think of one later. Feel free to call me. All right. I felt like it went faster this time.